You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners Court Meetings. Commissioners Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
The District Attorney invites you to join the 10 Mile Walk for Victims of Crime on Sunday, November 4th. The walk begins at the County Courthouse promptly at 7:00 a.m. and ends at Yucca Park. For more information, visit www.epcounty.com/DA/events or call 915-546-2091.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. The Road and Bridge Fabians Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabian Street in Fabians, Texas, 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.html to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coast, the number two, coast, r x dot com. Happy savings. Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048. The 346 District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048. You are watching the broadcast of the El Paso County Commissioners Court Meetings. Commissioners Court Meetings are held every Monday at 9:30 a.m. on the third floor of the El Paso County Courthouse located at 500 East San Antonio in downtown El Paso. These meetings are open to the public. The meeting will start momentarily.
Thank you for joining us today on this very cold Monday. We're going to get started in just a second.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Monday, October 15, 2018. Commissioners Court is meeting a regular open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is the Consent Agenda composed of items 3A through 3Q. At the request of the County Attorney's Office and JPD, we ask to delete item 3I from consent. Also, per Commissioner Stout, we'd like to pull item 3B for discussion as well as item 3K per Commissioner Perez.
Okay.
Are there any other items that the court or the members of the public would like to pull for discussion?
Any other items you'd like pulled, Commissioners? Commissioner Leon?
Yes, item 3P, as in Paul, please.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Ah, no, that's all the ones I wanted to have been pulled.
Okay. Any members, any items that the members of the public would like pulled? Are there any items that you all would like to discuss? No? Okay, so I would make a motion to approve all items in the consent agenda minus items B, I, K, and P.
Second?
Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Boat?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number four, public comment.
We do have one member of the public signed up to speak, and that is Mr. Pierre Andre Uzadaga. Good morning, Mr. Uzadaga.
Good morning, Your Honor. How are you doing?
I'm doing well, thank you. How are you?
Good, good. I'm doing well. It's good to see everyone again. It's been a couple of weeks, I know that. It's another day, so let's get to it really quick, five minutes. Let's do it like this. Because I'm here today to talk to the County of El Paso. Because it is the El Paso, Texas, United States of America, United Nations Campaign. I am the founder, president, and CEO of Emerald Star Global Industries. I just opened up this letter you all saw. This is from my attorney, and I'm kind of talking to the District Attorney Office today. I have, it says, "Dear Mr. Uzadaga, jury trial is scheduled for December 3, 2018 at 8:30 a.m. in El Paso Court at Law Number 7." Case number 20160C09120. This is for a harassment charge that I have. I do want to play a video involving the other party.
They're coming over just to fight with my son. Here, stop it here.
That's my mother.
Yes, they're right.
And I'm just in front of my home.
They're trying to fight.
And I have police documentation that corresponds to this video where the police showed up and I was in my contractor work, my contracting uniform. When I come up here, ladies and gentlemen, I talk about the realities that I've dealt with as a consumer, as an activist, what have you. Discrediting is something I've dealt with my whole adult life, my teenage years. You know, drug dealers get mad at people such as myself who try to bring the market on top of the table. And, you know, we shouldn't be putting up with little Peewee death threats and, you know, nonsense like that. This is just dust on my shoulders, and when I dust it off, it's hopefully in the form of a dismissal. And like I said, ladies and gentlemen, that's just proof, this is just evidence of a criminal element. Where there's weed, there's cocaine. Where there's cocaine, there's alcohol or cigarettes, right? And I can tell you right now, and I want you to bear with me the next few weeks, because in the next few weeks, we still have, you know, some elections or whatnot. We're trying to adjust ourselves. And I'm trying to run myself parallel to what's going on. And this is running parallel, unfortunately. This is unfortunate. I'm not trying to startle anyone. This is really no big issue to me. You know, I've dealt with stuff like this my whole life. This is just another scenario of discrediting. I don't think everything's going to get taken care of, but I'm here to help represent my attorney. I know the District Attorney is kind of putting up a fight. You know, I'm going to trial. I'm not going to go down for being discredited no longer. I'm here to leave, live my life as an example, lead by example, and hopefully, you know, show everyone, the District Attorney, the judges, the governors, legislators, and what have you, that, you know, cannabis has its place. That's why I wrote the Cannabis and Organics Act, to eliminate a lot of this element. People are afraid, "Well, I sell cocaine. I'm not going to be able to do it anymore." Emerald Star Global Industries is here because we're going to sell cocaine, but it's going to be coca leaves. Coca leaves only in a sack. It's going to have the Emerald Star logo on it. It's going to have the UNDA approval stamp on that. And people are going to be walking around with coca leaves, coca leaves, not cocaine powder. Cocaine, I don't like because it's synthetic. They use a plant, leaves, and they add chemicals and synthetics to it. And when you take too much, you die. It's deadly. We need to attack the synthetics and legalize all organics. So when I see Antonio Gutierrez, our Secretary General, or Nikki Haley in a cocoa field, and there's men around here with big machine guns and whatnot, I kind of, I'm scratching my head like, wow. And there's a big caption at the bottom that says, "We're going to stop the drug trade."
Time.
We need to legalize it and then regulate it. Approve the organic of it, the simplicity of it. You know, it's grown, cut it, harvest it, and we consume it. But once people start getting that organic and they start cutting it and start adding synthetics to it, that's where it's deadly and illegal. And all these, you know, we're talking violence. It'll go away. People are like, "What do we do now?" Well, now you're going to go to an Emerald Star retail outlet where there's taxes going to be generated during that transaction, and everyone's going to get their percentage, so to say. The government has to be involved. We have to. And so in closing, I do want to continue to show everybody that I'm not afraid to be transparent with the local government, state government, federal government, but I do need some assistance. I need some help. And I am here waiting for that invitation to answer these questions. And bear with me the next few weeks. It's going to be interesting to see what happens. I'm all eyes and ears, as we all are. And in closing, I want to thank you all again for the five minutes, and we'll see you all next week.
Good afternoon, Mr. Uzadaga.
Thank you, Your Honor. You all too. Commissioners, excuse me, have a good day.
I believe that is the only individual signed up for public comment. If we could go ahead and take the items pulled from the consent agenda, Ms. Conchera, please.
Item 3B, approve and authorize the county judge to sign a position statement opposing the transporting of radioactive waste through El Paso County.
Thank you. Judges and Commissioners, I pulled this item because of being contacted by some people and asking about it, and I just wanted to, you know, kind of give some background as to why we're looking at doing this. You know, I think we all know that county government, one of our main tasks is public health. And, you know, there are a couple of projects in southeastern New Mexico and in west Texas that are being proposed to create what they call consolidated interim storage for spent nuclear fuel rods. And this would be temporary storage while a permanent repository would be built. And so in Andrews, Texas, there's a facility that's proposed and moving forward, it looks like, that would store about 40,000 metric tons of nuclear waste. And that project could be open by 2021. And so it's coming along very quickly. And then in the Carlsbad and Hobbs area, they're also proposing a new facility that would store about 120,000 metric tons of nuclear waste, and they're hoping to have that open by 2022. And, you know, so I think that we want to make it clear here in El Paso County that, you know, we want to make sure that we protect the health and the welfare of the people that live in this county and this city. And let it be known that, you know, we do not want this radioactive waste being transported on our roads. Not only is it a public health issue, but, you know, there could be a lot of traffic coming through here, and, you know, the big trucks obviously are taxing on our, could be taxing on our county roads as well. I think the biggest message here is that, you know, in Texas, we don't have, we don't create or produce nuclear waste, and in New Mexico, they don't either. And so, you know, I for one think that, you know, in this state, we shouldn't be accepting other people's nuclear waste if we don't even produce it ourselves. So that's why I wanted to pull the item and kind of let folks know kind of where we're coming from with this. So I don't know if anybody else has anything that they'd like to...
I just have a question. El Paso Electric Company has ownership in a nuclear power plant, correct?
I don't know.
To my knowledge, they have like 10 to 15% owner, or percentage of ownership of a nuclear power plant. So my only fear is we're willing to take the electricity of a nuclear power plant, but not the waste of a power plant. And that's, I don't know if that is a little hypocritical of us to say. I don't know if this is coming from that, and that's what I would like to know before I agree to sign this. If this is the nuclear waste from the plant that an El Paso company, the El Paso Electric Company owns, it's kind of hypocritical to say, "We want your electricity, but not your waste." And I would like to know that information of where this waste is coming from before we take this vote personally.
And Commissioner, I had actually received some information from several groups as well, and I believe that the 19th is the last day for public entities to submit comment to the Nuclear Regulatory Commission on the Andrews site that is being proposed. I don't have the answer to the question about El Paso Electric, but I will say that several communities across Texas and New Mexico have passed similar statements or resolutions on behalf of their cities or their Commissioners Court with the concern being that you've got these different nuclear facilities who are sending these spent rods to different facilities across the country. Now, they're all going to be potentially funneling into Andrews or Carlsbad, and so they would be coming through El Paso either through rail or through semi truck. And if there were to be some kind of accident or even a terrorist situation where a track were to derail and they were to somehow contaminate the area, I mean, it could cause some pretty significant damage to our water and wastewater, and you know all this.
I don't disagree.
And so the reason why it was put on today was to meet that deadline for the 19th if we are going to take a position on it. This is separate and apart from what's being discussed in the Lower Valley, Commissioner Perez, and what's being discussed there, but wanted to at least bring it forward to the court for our consideration. I would rather that we take a position just so that we can submit something to the Regulatory Commission on behalf of El Paso. I don't know if the city has been approached or not, that that's where this is coming from and kind of my perspective in supporting it. I don't know about the El Paso Electric question, though.
And that's my only issue. I don't disagree. In no way, shape, or form do I think, do I want to say, "Hey, bring your toxic waste through El Paso, Texas." But it's just kind of hypocritical to have ownership in a nuclear power plant and take all the electricity from it, but say, you know, not in my backyard kind of situation with the waste that comes with it. If, you know, you can't have the one without the other. And that's my only fear in doing this, is it's going to create a little bit of a hypocrisy situation.
And just for the public's sake, this would not be coming to El Paso, it's just coming through El Paso potentially, because you've got all these nuclear facilities sending their spent rods to Andrews, and they could come through here. And so that's the concern. So you've got communities across the state who have taken a position to try to keep this from happening in our backyards, or at least coming through our backyards to protect the health and welfare of those that live in our community. So I'm not sure if there are any other comments or questions.
No, I'll go ahead and move to approve the position statement.
Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Without having the knowledge, or the questions that I would like answered, I'm not ready to make a vote yes on this, so no.
Judge Boat?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Perfect. Thank you.
Item 3K, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the fourth maintenance agreement addendum to the facing group elevator master agreement to include the wheelchair lifts at the jail annex for an additional $1,024 a month. Funding is available in general fund part correction PW SO jail amendment contract services general, contract number 20180298.
Good morning, Judge. County Commissioners, Robin Sully, Facility Maintenance. Just to give you a little background history on this particular project, on July 18th, the County Court approved the First Amendment to Master Agreement to include the elevators at the County Campbell Parking Lot Garage and Overland Garage. On December 2016, the Court approved the Second Amendment to add elevators in the scarcity. On the November of 2017, the Court approved the Third Amendment to add elevators maintenance for the medical exam. Today, we're asking for your approval for the Fourth Amendment to add four wheelchairs, lift stations located at the jail annex on the east side.
Judge, yeah, I'd request this item be pulled. I just had a, in looking at the backup, I was just, the cost sort of stood out for me. It's about $12,000 a year just for four lift stations. I mean, is that, I don't know, sir, if you know that that's consistent with the other addendums and the other elevators? But, you know, just to, you know, I guess, maintain these four pieces of equipment for over 1,000 a month just seemed a bit high.
I had the same fear.
I'm sorry, say again.
I had the same fear. I mean, $12,288 a year to review, to inspect for the stations a year. I mean, I can't imagine how much, what that is or entails, but that seems like a lot of money. of money.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioner Norbert Palacios. These lifts were part of the annex project, and so they're required by the Texas jail standards. They were still under warranty until recently since the project's been completed. And we do have the funds because it's part of a requirement. They need to inspect them, and they need to be available for the inmates if they should need wheelchairs, arrangements for their wheelchairs.
I don't disagree with that, but it just seems like $12,000 is a lot of money to inspect for lift stations.
And it's part of the maintenance also. It's not just the inspection. It's part of the maintenance.
But what we could do to verify that it's reasonable, I questioned the price of them as well because it seems very high to maintain these only as needed. We could table this one week and let us verify how our prices compare to another, to other entities that have wheelchair lifts that are maintained. Because I did a little research. I mean, for non-industrial wheelchair lifts, it's much lower, but I need industrial wheelchair lift to compare.
Yeah, and it may be that the entity that's inspecting the lifts aren't the same entity that perhaps manufactured the lifts. I mean, from the backup says it's a Garaventa wheelchair lift and the contractors with the Dyson crap. And so that might be the difference. But, I mean, just to make sure that we really looked at all options, because it does seem rather high for...
The other, and the other thing we can research, I don't know, I know we are very limited on who can service elevators, but I don't know if we're as limited on who can service wheelchair lifts. So we can definitely look into that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
We'll look into it and bring it back next week.
Okay.
So we will postpone item K for one week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm P.
Thank you.
Item 3K will be postponed for one week per judge vote. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item 3P, approve and authorize the county judge to accept the U.S. Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance Award under the fiscal year 2018 Bulletproof Vest Partnership for the El Paso County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $15,185.94 with a 50% match from October 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2021. Contract number 2018-0715.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners. The reason I brought this up, thank you for coming up this morning. I was unclear as to, I was looking at the numbers and my math is terrible. And from reading the backup, it's 15,185 plus a 50% match from the county. And that's where I think I'm hung up. It equates to about 22.7, but your math is probably better than mine.
No, sir. Good morning, Commissioner. Good morning, Judge. Isabel Edinandez from Budget and Fiscal Policy, and I have Lieutenant Soria.
Soria from the Sheriff's Office.
When we applied for this grant, it's primarily what we applied for were for 55 bulletproof vests and five female vests, 55 male and five female. And that equates to more or less $33,540. And when you divide that by two for a match, the amount that we applied for was $16,770, and we ended up getting just the $15,185.94.
So at $15,185.94, a 50% match is...
Well, it should be a one-to-one match.
So it's 100% match, is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I guess for the record, that clears it up completely. So it's 100% match, and the total would be $30,370?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay, Lieutenant, thank you. Motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second? I believe we have a motion in a second.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Also, Judge, can we bring up item 3E from consent?
Yes, sir. We could pull that back up for discussion. I believe we have to amend the backup for that item? Or do we have to, Ms. Sanchez, do we have to, is it because we received the backup just a bit ago?
Correct. We...
No, E.
3A.
3E.
Just make a reference with the amended backup as provided.
Yeah, 3E.
Item 3E, pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, Section 115.021, audit and settle all accounts against the county shown on the attached listing and direct the payment of those accounts.
Yes, Edward Deon, County Auditor. We had a request for a paid claim come up on Friday, and they brought the manual pay claim list for your approval, but it was delivered after you made the motion already. The addition was Border International Trucks Incorporated out of CIP 17 Roden Bridge Vehicles for $160,285. Just wanted to make sure that it was formally included in your approval and you were aware of it. It's also online. Thank you for your consideration.
Questions, Commissioners, with that one addition?
I'll have to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Bettis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Contreras, if we could pull item 22 and move it forward, please? Let's get to item X.
Yes, sir. Item number 22, Budget and Finance. Receive a presentation from the county's financial advisor regarding current market conditions and the county's long-term debt portfolio.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brad Engst with George K. Baumann Company, Vice President. With me today, I've got my colleague Dan Mahoney, also with George K. Baumann Company. Good to be back with you. It's been since July since we've visited about your debt portfolio and some market conditions. Got a few items to go through with you. Since that date, you have received your newest test valuations and locked in your new tax rate for the coming tax year and property tax payments. County continues to see good steady growth, averaging 2% to 3% each year. With that comes a good solid tax base, which helps you to take care of your capital projects and repayments. In the eyes of the rating agencies, you have a very good, broad industry mix and diverse set of payers, which is listed on this slide here.
Did I do something?
Moving forward, we've got a summary of your debt portfolio. For the past couple, in few years, it's been a low interest rate environment. We've been able to refinance many of your outstanding bonds and loans to get into lower interest rates, lowering your debt service and the amount you do need to repay. With that said, there's not, at this time, a whole lot of opportunity within your debt portfolio to go and refinance. But again, that's a good thing. That means we've done a good job working with you and the staff to get these into good, low-interest rates overall. In the right-hand column of this chart, it shows the call dates. Those are the days, the dates at which you can prepay the loans. The only one that's approaching is that 2019 call date, which is for your Series 2016 C. And that's a size that's, there's about a million one remaining. It's not at a size that makes a whole lot of economic sense to pursue, so we don't anticipate looking to refund that one. On the bottom right there, we've got the payoff, how fast you pay off the principal of your loans. The rating agencies like to see that at least 50% of your total principal outstanding is paid off within 10 years. You are exceeding that. So again, you've got really strong metrics with your tax base, with your debt portfolio, and the way it's set up. So we are happy with that at the time being. The bottom left there, the pie chart, represents the bonds that are callable versus the bonds that are non-callable. We like to have a larger percentage of the callable so that you have flexibility, the ability to not only refinance but also restructure should there be some fiscal or economic pressures. We have some other tools for your administration and staff.
Before you go to the next page...
Yes, sir.
Two questions. One, so our total bond debt right now is $176 million?
That's correct.
And with the changes that went into effect with the federal government, how does that affect us? I know interest rates are going up, so it doesn't affect us nearly as much as it used to. But how is that gonna affect, so anything that's non-callable, we cannot refinance, period, correct?
Not refinance it early. So we used to be able to do what's called an advanced refunding, where one time in the life of a bond or a loan that's tax exempt, you can go out before that call date and refinance. You can still refinance or refund these bonds, but you need to wait for that call date now.
Okay.
So prior to the change in the tax law, if you look at the Series 2012 that has a 2021 call date, we'd be getting into an environment currently where that might make economic sense to take a look at now or in the near future to be called. As a result of the tax law change, that is no longer a tax-exempt financing option.
So we can no longer, if interest rates magically went to one tomorrow, we could not refinance it till 2021?
Not with another tax-exempt issue. You can always go out with taxable bonds if those interest rates are low enough to where it makes economic sense, but not into another tax-exempt debt instrument.
Thank you.
Glad we were lucky to do what we did in December, where we were able to save the taxpayers about $5.6 million in debt over the next 14 years, which is...
Exactly right. We hustled and we got under the deadline there in mid-December with that closing, with good refunding and refinancing for the county. This is a look at your debt service over the coming years. We've stacked each series of debt on each other to give you the total aggregate. We've got it level here for the next four years. Then you'll see a pretty significant drop-off there in 2023, some other drop-offs in '27 and '23. So a lot of future capacity that's coming available for the county's projects, not only through this kind of drop-off in the debt service, but as you continue to grow your tax base, you also have a little bit of upside. As your tax base grows, you're producing more revenues off the same tax rate than you have historically. So a couple of opportunities, we continue to work with you and staff on those needs to build out, you know, the capital improvement plan and some of the items that you all have targeted for your community. With that, we'll get into a bit of a market update. The big scenarios that we continue to hear about are some of the trade items. We're pleased that the NAFTA items between the U.S. and Mexico and Canada begin to settle in. They've called it, the new administration is calling it, the USMCA, the U.S.-Mexico-Canada Agreement. It's mainly pretty similar, and we've got some more detail on that here in a few minutes, but it's pretty similar to NAFTA. There were some changes to the automobile rules and trade going back and forth, but for the most part, economists and others are saying that we're not gonna see a whole lot of change as far as the number-wise and the GDP and the numbers that it produces. So we're seeing global markets and employment continue to be strong. That's been going on now for a good couple of years, a bull market. This past week, though, what a difference a week can make. We saw a big decline in the U.S. stock market, and while some of the indicators and the leading indicators of GDP, industrial production, housing starts have been strong, we're starting to see those equity markets, the stock markets, take a downturn globally. Almost every economy outside of the U.S. has actually had a pretty down year. China is down in the negative 30% range. Some of the other emerging markets are down in the negative 20% range. The U.S. is still holding a positive gain on the year, but this past week, we saw about a 5% decline. So some economists are saying maybe we're nearing the end of the bull market cycle. We're seeing some other things that maybe indicate that with the flattening of the yield curve that we've talked to the past couple quarterly updates. And that's when your short-term interest rates begin to rise and may eventually match those of your long-term rates. So Fed continues to try and keep an eye on inflation, and that's why they're primarily raising the short-term rates. Unemployment, as we mentioned, is still very low. We're starting to see a little bit of a downturn, not downturn, but a slowdown in the housing market, not to the levels we saw in 2008. It seems to be a more gradual, typical cycle this time around and that we hope for. So nothing happening here immediately, but over the next year or two, we may see that. With that, we'll dive into some more detail. Dan, you want to take them through some of the comments?
Yes, as Mr. Engst had alluded to, one of the big concerns of the Federal Reserve over, you know, the last two years or so now has been, you know, we're worried about the U.S. market basically overheating and us starting to see some pretty significant inflation. And as one of their primary policy objectives, that is, you know, something they've been trying to avoid. And by doing so, or by raising interest rates, they've been able to combat that and kind of keep the U.S. economy looking very strong. As we've talked about, there have been several rate, interest rate hikes in the last two years. We've seen more interest rate hikes in that time period than we had in the 10 prior years. So it's a strong sentiment that the market is doing well. So far this year, we've seen several rate hikes, and we're continuing to expect at least one more. And this December's meeting, as well as two to three more next year, which points to the fact that all economic indicators, in spite of, you know, the global environment and our own slowdown, you know, economic indications are still suggesting that we're on the right path for continued long-term growth and success.
I think the key is, we want the Fed to combat the inflation, but, you know, not to take it too far to where it maybe slides us into that recession or downturn. Again, that's normal with your economic cycles. You don't want to go too far to where it kind of exacerbates that potential situation. All in all, I don't want to paint too gloomy of a picture. It is still a good economic environment out there, but we're starting to see some things that maybe in the next year or two, you know, some of the equity side of things would go a bit on the downside.
Generally, the market does tend to cycle, and we've been in a completely abnormal interest or in market environment for about a decade now, ever since the Great Recession of '08-'09. So I think right now, we're starting to see the indications that the markets are starting to get back into what has been the long-term normal. And for a long time, we've kind of, as an industry, really wondered if we would ever get back to the normal or if we would be on a new normal. But it seems that the picture that we're starting to see is that this is a slowdown, but not, you know, a dramatic stop as we saw, you know, 10 years ago. And we're starting to get back to where a good, long-term, healthy economy ought to be.
Spoke to some of the other equity markets, and these are some charts here that show our local markets, some of the other global markets as well. I think we've hit on most of these, that the trade tensions with China continue to kind of dominate as well as Brexit, the potential that great bin may exit the European Union. So some things that are affecting the markets on the whole. Spoke a little bit about NAFTA. We have some notes in here for your further reading. Again, a lot of the core aspects of NAFTA do remain in place. There's maybe a little, it's not quite as, you know, free trade as that acronym NAFTA maybe presents has been in the past between the North American countries. But we do think it was, in the financial industry, we think it was a good agreement so forth that things are now set. We can start to project on what this means for businesses, and it wasn't quite as drastic as some of the rhetoric originally indicated. So... So we expect some, some deep analysis and reports to come out on this in the next month from some of the rating agencies, and we'll, as always, pass that along to staff and the court as desired.
Thank you.
Spoke to the flattening yield curve. This has been part of what we keep an eye on for the last, last year really, as it's balanced out. The more those short-term rates come up, it kind of changed the dynamic. It has some indicators that we were talking about as far as a slowdown. Traditionally, when you had access to those advanced refundings, it meant this was a good time to maybe go and refinance debt because not only are you getting the lower long-term rates, but you can go and invest your escrow earnings on the short end in a higher interest rate. So you lock in a lower long-term rate. In the meantime, you're, you're able to invest your escrow on those old bonds at a, at a higher rate. So it's not all bad with flattening yield curve. You do have some better investment rates. We hope that your auditors and finance department are starting to realize as well. A little more recent information here from the past couple of weeks. We did see this past month, the benchmark yields for municipal bonds increased about 20 basis points on the short end and another 30 basis points or so on the long end. So we're starting to see kind of a movement across the board of those going up. This past week, we saw a bit of a correction. When the stock market goes down, the traditional relationship is that some of that money is being taken and put into the bond market, which lowers the interest rates, the borrowing yields that El Paso has. So last week, we saw interest rates actually come down about seven basis points. And so those numbers, I told you on a monthly basis, actually were higher originally and have come down just this past week. But overall, that continued interest rate increase that we've all been kind of keeping an eye on and thought was going to come over the past couple of years seems to be, seems to be taking hold. More look at the changes in interest rates over the past year. They're on the chart on the right, as well as the difference between a triple A type credit on the left and then a triple B and a single A and double A.
I think one of the more telling points about the chart on the left is you see that the overall spread between triple A interest rates and triple B, which is just above non-investment grade, or it's a very tight spread versus historical. And that really just points to the fact that, as we've been saying, we've been on a strong economic path. And as a result of that, most of investment money has been flowing into the equity markets and away from the bond funds. And as there aren't as much money in, you know, moving towards bonds, there hasn't been as much of a, you know, spread differential between those markets. People are, investors are simply hungry for any bonds they can get as a lack of some pretty low supply. So as we continue to see the market correction kind of take place and where interest rates and the overall economy goes in the next three months, we might see, start to see a little bit of a spreading out of those interest rates on the left.
Twenty-year look at interest rates, the solid, well, the dotted lines going across the middle of the chart there represent the averages over the past 20 years. The more volatile numbers, the solid blue line represents the current rate in each of those years. So we're still below historical averages for the last 20 years. We're getting a little closer to what those averages are, but not at the historically low levels that you saw in 2012 and '13, and then this past year and prior year in '16, '17. So creeping back up there. It's the flow of investor money in between, in and out of bond funds kind of represents, you know, the, the demand side of our, of our market. So still a lot of green there, a lot to the top side of that chart, meaning there's inflows for the most part coming into, into our market. Now looking at the credit spreads, that chart that Dan had been discussing, we're looking at the different yield curves for each. This shows in a different manner. What you'll see on the very right-hand side though is how they've tightened, how the difference between a triple B and a triple A are fairly compressed at today's, in today's market. A look at what some of your peers have done here the past quarter. Counties throughout Texas have been fairly active. We saw Hidalgo County down in the valley come out with a pretty big issuance, over 100 million. We see La Salle County with a few different bond series there as well.
What, what does, if you can go back to, what does private placement mean?
So each time the county has needs to go out for financing, you're approaching a new project, we evaluate mainly three different sources of capital or funds for you. There's the bond market through a public offered bond sale. And when you have a high interest rate and a 20-year type of repayment schedule, that's typically the cheapest cost of capital for you. Another option is going to be maybe commercial lenders that we go out and we talk to maybe local banks and national banks and some other private kind of investments that want to buy all of your debt. They want to hold, you know, the full project. Instead of selling to maybe 50 different bond investors at a bond sale, you privately place it with one individual and you structure your terms around their needs. Sometimes they can provide a better structure for you, whether it be terms and covenants, or they can provide you cheaper money at the lower interest rate. We usually see that if you're more in the 10-year range, but there's the time and place for those private placements. Third option is usually some of the state federal programs will look at USDA, will look at the State Infrastructure Bank. And so each time we go out and try and find you the funds and financing for your projects, we're evaluating each one of those items and we work out our recommendation that way with your staff.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to mention something about this comparison. Hidalgo County, the majority of that, I believe, is for their stormwater infrastructure. About 100, I think it totaled like about 100, they were going out for about, I read where they were going out for about $190 million in stormwater bonds.
I think it wound up, yep, right about 170. Which brings us to some financing considerations and some items we put in front of you the last few meetings and we continue to work with your staff on. With the policy and the one penny that you've set aside for your stormwater, as well as transportation, you do have some opportunities to go out and finance some of these projects, utilizing those, dependent upon, obviously, the preparation, architecture, engineering, and some proposals. But we do have a few different options to finance these projects. What's in front of you here the first time is utilizing a one penny. Look at your tax levy. This could produce approximately 4.2 million a year, and it could get you about $65 million on the front end if you did a one-time issuance utilizing that full penny. What we've recommended and talked to you about in the past is more of a, a more frequent issuance every two years, every three years, going out for project sizes in the 12 to $15 million range and utilizing that same penny of revenue, having a more of an ongoing basis so that you can tackle projects every few years instead of one large one and be tapped out for 20 years until that rolls off. So that's a look at this. Again, this is looking at 12 and a half million a year of projects every two years, excuse me. And this is what it would look like graphically. So in the dark blue on the left, looking at 2021, you structure it such that you have a heavy front-end debt payment that lowers your interest costs quite a bit by putting them on the front end. And then each year, you can layer them on, each couple of years layered on so that you never exceed that penny that you've set aside, but it continues to grow and it gives you a more perpetual type program to where you can go after some of these projects. So we continue to work with your staff. We're going to visit with them again here over the next couple of days to review some ideas, but we stand ready to forward with any of the commissioners' thoughts on, on these projects. With that, be happy to answer any further questions or have a further discussion on market activity.
Commissioners, any other questions? So for, we appreciate all the information. It's always incredibly helpful to see where we fall in comparison to the other communities and, and what's happening with the market. So there is no action on this item today, so we appreciate it again and we look forward to seeing you again very soon.
We'll see you in another few months with another update. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon. Can we go ahead and also take item 16, please? I think we have some guests here for this item.
Item number 16, Health and Social Services. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the service agreement workforce development services with Project Arriba for workforce development services in the amount of $75,000 for a period beginning October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019. Funding is available in General Fund, General Admin, Contract Services, Project Arriba EP, contract number 2018-0657.
Good morning, County Judge Commissioners. Irene Valenzuela, Community Services Department. This is the agreement for Project Arriba. You all during your budget approval process this year approved an appropriation from your general fund for $75,000 for workforce development type of services from Project Arriba. Like last year's agreement, Project Arriba will use the entire fund for direct expenses for students such as tuition, books, materials, testing fees, things of that nature. None of that money will be used for operations or admin support for Project Arriba, but it is for direct expenses. From that $75,000, they will be servicing 75 students. Out of those, 15 will be new participants for this year.
Irene, if I understand correctly, these, this program is targeted for residents that live outside the city limits?
That's correct, sir. It's exclusive for folks outside the city limits, not inside.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
Mr. Ortiz is here. If you have any questions for him or if you may want to say something.
Would you like to say anything, Mr. Ortiz?
Thank you for your support all throughout the years. This funding is very critical to help individuals in the rural areas of the County of El Paso. Thank you.
Mr., I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mr. Ortiz, since you're there, can you send the court a quarterly report? And I think that's what you've been doing, of the number of participants and how they're doing, just a general report of this program?
Absolutely. To the, to the Commissioners Court and the judge, would you like that every quarter? We can do that. We do send to Irene and her team every month a monthly report, but we can do a quarterly summarized report for you all as well.
I think it'd be very helpful. Thank you.
And in the contract, Project Arriba is required to come and report to you twice a year as well to give you a status update on their performance.
I believe Commissioner Stout made a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other questions before we take the vote? No? Okay.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Though I feel they're a great organization, I don't believe it's our job to give to nonprofits, so no.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon. And we can go back to the regular order of the agenda, please.
Item number five, auditor. Pursuant to the Texas Government Code Title 10, Section 2256.025, approve the following list of dealers approved to engage in investment transactions with the county. These dealers have met the criteria established in the county's investment policy. Any other dealers will be submitted to Commissioners Court when they meet the county's requirements as specified in the investment policy.
The two, eight and nine. Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Jim Utterback, Agent Manager Senior for County Auditor's Office for Financial Reporting. This is a routine where we go through and approve our broker dealers that have met our requirements. And as we have gotten closer to having our safekeeping agreement, we're now adding on the broker dealers. You see, I have it separated into the investment pools. We have Tech Pool Prime and Tech Pool. Under the Tech Pool, we have Logic and Tech Star that have met our qualifications. Right now, the interest rates for Tech Pool is at 2.13% and for Tech Pool Prime is at So we are compared to our bank interest rates. This is a lot higher. The bank interest rate is at the 0.15% area right now. We have moved most of our money into the pool. We are right now with General Fund. We have a seven to one ratio as to, for every million dollars we have in Tech Pool, we have seven times that in Tech Pool Prime. Any questions?
Mister's questions? No? I'd move to approve of Commissioner Perez.
Did we ultimately decide how much it is we set aside to invest? I know we had some discussions on that during budget, but...
We, I have gone through the estimates on that. For our first 90 days, we will need approximately expenditures, approximately 70 million, which would require us, we'll receive in and sales tax approximately 12 million during that time. So we would need about 60 million to cover our first 90 days. Right now is with the pool rates and the market rates, the treasuries, our breakeven is about five months out to where it becomes more sensible to invest in treasuries or agencies over the Tech Pool Prime.
I could say, Commissioner, your question is how much are we leaving in the bank versus how much we're investing? Because we're sweeping just about everything we can into the pools to get that higher rate because the bank rate is extremely low. We just make sure that we can cover our float for the checks hitting the bank, but we're minimizing the amount in the bank right now.
Yeah. And we are bringing that rate. As we've gotten our numbers more solid on our financial system, we have brought that number down. We had last year about 60 million in the bank. Now we are down to about 19 million with 12 million being in the consolidated fund, the rest of it being in separate funds.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners? So there's a motion. Can we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the resolution amending authorized representatives for investments and withdrawals from Tech Pool and Tech Pool Prime.
On this one is just a routine housekeeping where we are updating the people that are on our investment pool to authorize investments or withdraw money from the pool. All withdrawals are done predefined so that nobody can tamper with that. That requires approval for us to set up the accounts in coming back here. As for this, it transfers, I had individuals in other divisions within the Auditor's Office that would do the investments in the absence of my investment analyst or myself. And by putting it within one division, I have more control over when I can be out and when my assistant can be out, and we still have full coverage.
To never be out.
Right now, it's been that way.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners, on the list of representatives?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I do have the original here for your signature.
Okay. You'll give it to...
Item number seven, pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, Section 113.004D, copy attached, approve and transfer of all fines... copy attached, approve and transfer of all fines and forfeitures to the General Fund.
Edward Dion, County Auditor. This is also a housekeeping issue. This has been done, um, for the last 35 years that I have been here, uh, and before that. We do it as a precaution because the statute, uh, asks that we separate funds into three categories. One of those categories deals with the transportation fund and, uh, moving violations, uh, that affect roads. There's a requirement that some of those fines go into the road and bridge fund. The statutes allow the Commissioners to go ahead and just transfer those funds annually into the General Fund. And the reason that's done is that when you look at the overall fines and fees that are collected, uh, during the year, um, they're significantly less than the cost of patrolling the roads. In prior years, I'll just give you a little perspective. When the county was in dire straits, the county of El Paso transferred some excess road and bridge funds into the General Fund to help it get along. And so the law allows that to happen. Um, so we've always put this item on so that any fines and forfeitures that were road-related, that the authorization was given by the Commissioners' Court to put those in the General Fund. At this point, I don't have a number on what those fines and fees are, but I can tell you for fiscal year 18, the revenues were less than the expenses by $10.3 million. And on average, you'd spend, you know, $7 to $9 million a year, where the expenditures of patrolling the roads, that's just salary and fringe for sheriff's patrol, has exceeded the fines and forfeitures received by the county of El Paso. So my recommendation would be to go ahead and approve this. If you all want to have it researched further, there's three AG opinions that authorize the county Commissioners' Court to transfer road and bridge funds to the General Fund. And I think they've addressed this in the past, so if you want clarification, they can further research it, search it and come back with some additional guidance for the future. But we've been doing this forever, and we do it as a legal compliance, just to make sure that we're basically in line with what the law prescribes.
Questions, Commissioners? Yeah? Ms. Keller?
Yes, Betsy, I guess you, you reviewed this. I mean, we had a little bit of discussion about, you know, the, the road and bridge fund and, you know, I know there used to be dedicated funds, particularly from the, from the $10 fee that used to be assessed. Um, and then the law was changed where that, that funding eventually went into the General Fund. And, you know, we've had some discussions about, you know, what's the appropriate level to fund, you know, road and bridge in the absence of a dedicated, uh, fund, you know, it was probably way too much, uh, back then, um, compared to what it is now.
Can I just clarify one thing? That the $10 road and bridge fund fee stays in the road and bridge fund. It's the, it's the auto sales tax that the law changed to bring it over. So I understand what you were saying, though. The money has moved out and the fund may need some additional funds, so maybe we should, we should research it and determine what that really amounts to? Because the General Fund ultimately is going to be responsible for giving road and bridge funds when they come short for capital and for road paving. And you've already done that. Last year, you gave three and a half million, I think it was, for road paving.
Yeah. And so, I mean, you know, I'm sort of mixed on this, Betsy, because it's just, I mean, ultimately, if it goes into the General Fund, I mean, you know, we should be appropriating it back, which I think should have happened with the sales tax, you know, is making sure that, you know, rather than going back to the General Fund 100%, but I guess have you looked at this, at the funding level of road and bridge and...
So this particular, um, resource of being able to use the fines from traffic citations, basically, to fund road and bridge funds, we have not looked at, at specifically, um, dedicating it that way. But we do know that whether we, whether we look at dedicating a particular source such as this fund, or we allow this to go to the General Fund and we, but we do know that we are going to need additional General Fund dollars to fund road and bridge going forward. This year, we, uh, were able to, um, get through the budget cycle without having to do that. But we know that next year, in order to keep up with the demands, especially for road paving, we are going to have to shift some of the costs that are currently in the road and bridge fund that are not as appropriate as paving is. They're all appropriate, but they're not as specific as paving is to road and bridge funds. Um, we, the one that we talked about this year was about $900,000 for fleet maintenance, um, that is used to maintain road and bridge vehicles, but that we could move it out to increase, uh, paving dollars. Uh, because as the normer presented to the court, I mean, you look at the number of roads we've added and you look at the condition of those roads, we know we need additional funding, um, to be able to keep up with our road, our road maintenance. So we can look at this, this resource, um, as one way, but it won't, um, right now, it's going to the General Fund. So we would basically having, be, having to re- allocate General Fund dollars. If we, if we don't allocate them to the General Fund, we start allocating them to road and bridge, we are going to have to, uh, identify either a cut or a replacement for those funds.
Does it ultimately matter, I mean, whether we put this in the General Fund or not? I mean, if, if there's a big shortfall? I mean, for, I don't, I don't mind approving this item. I mean, it just, if it goes in the General Fund, I mean, we can ultimately redirect it back, but just, we just need to be cautious of, I guess, what, what's dedicated, um, you know, whether or not, you know, and looking at the funding levels necessary for...
It is a good point, Commissioner, that perhaps this next budget, uh, the court will want to redesignate that funding to go back into road and bridge to, to cover that loss and funding to that, that account.
Just to follow up on that, it, it'll be a tedious process, but I can have my staff start trying to identify which of those fines and fees relate to road violations. So you will have that information available to you. That's, I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Second?
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number eight, Judiciary and Corrections. Approve and authorize the county judge to accept the 65th District Protective Order Court Grant Award funded by the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division in the amount of $160,800 with a county match of $66,063 for a total project amount of $226,863 for the grant period beginning September 1st, 2018 through August 31st, 2019. Further approve the, correction, further authorize the county judge to sign the resolution as a requirement of the grant, contract number 2018-0707.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Wouldn't be one of my presentations without a fancy presentation.
May have to start your free trial today.
There you go. All right. So, uh, good morning again. Uh, this presentation to Commissioners' Court is usually the shortest and easiest I have to make every year. It's usually the time that I happily announce to you that the county has been offered grant money in order to fund its Protective Order Court and asking that you approve a motion to accept the funding for the upcoming fiscal year. Uh, well, this year, I will be doing that, however, it's not going to be all that short of a presentation because of some issues that came up that need some explanation before you take action on the item. Uh, over the last week, I've met with representatives of HR, uh, the Budget Office, auditors, and, uh, we've had various meetings regarding these issues that we're going to be bringing up to, to your attention. And I believe that the action items that are, uh, on the agenda are, have been crafted by all of those offices with their approval. So it seems like we're on the same page with regards to, to the motions. Uh, but before I get into the particulars of that, I kind of want to give you just a very, very brief background of, of, uh, of the grant and the things that are pertinent to the issues that you'll be considering. Uh, first of all, the amount of VAWA grant, uh, funding has been steadily and significantly decreasing for this entire region over the last three to four years. Um, this has resulted in either programs receiving less funding from VAWA or programs not, uh, being funded at all. Uh, over the last two years, the state has been indicating that their point of emphasis is an applicant sustainability plan. In other words, their whole concept about grant money is not that it, um, well, their whole concept is that it's more or less like seed money. So it's provided to a project, then if the project works, hopefully, the sponsoring entity will take over funding of that project, leaving those grant monies available for new projects down the road. Well, we incorporated that sustainability plan in our grant application, which you all approved on January 29th, 2018. And in the grant submission cover sheet to Commissioners' Court, we had the following financial breakdown. Over the years, historically, the grant funds have been, uh, used to help pay for the bailiff, the court reporter and the court coordinator. Uh, this year, uh, when we applied for the grant, we basically told them that if, uh, if you all fund us, then basically we're going to take the court coordinator position and put that position under our manning table under the general revenue fund. So that's the reason for the extended, uh, presentation in that, uh, that position was mistakenly omitted from our 2018, 2019 budget. Um, now the issues, there's no similar issues, again, with the bailiff or the court reporter because they continue to be on the manning table under the grant employees. So again, that's not the issue. The issue is the court coordinator position. Um, and I want to emphasize a few things before...
Judge, before you go on, can we actually read into the record item nine? Because I think you might be talking about item nine as well.
Yes, please, if we could do that.
Item number nine, approve and authorize the court coordinator position for the 65th Protective Order Court at a salary of $75,006, inclusive of fringe benefits to be paid from the county general fund. Further authorize allocation of funding in the amount of $53,506 from general administrative transfer out grant match to the Protective Order Court salary and fringe accounts.
Thank you, Judge, for pointing that out. So I want to emphasize a few things. First of all, we're not asking for Commissioners' Court to dedicate any new money from, uh, years past to the Protective Order Court. Uh, as you can see, going back to 2016, uh, the court was awarded $162,000 from the state. And then last year, it was a little bit less, about $161,000. This year, if you look at the very top of it, we asked for $160,800, and that's in fact what we're being offered to fund the court. So again, just an emphasis that, uh, we're not asking any for, we're not asking for new monies to be dedicated to the court. Uh, the second thing I point out to you is that when I say that VAWA funding is significantly decreasing, that really is no exaggeration. Uh, this year, and again, we're not just talking about El Paso County, we're talking about the entire region. This year, the allocation was only $160,817 for three grants applicants, um, requesting over half a million dollars. So those funds have, have, have shrunk. Um, and I can tell you that having presented to the CJAC Committee, who then makes, uh, who ranks the applications and then makes recommendations to the COG, who then, uh, makes the recommendations to the state, that that played heavily in the CJAC Committee's, uh, decision to rank the, uh, Protective Order Court application as the number one applicant. Uh, and not only that, but the CJAC Committee recommended that all of the regional funding go to the Protective Order Court over the, the other two that applied for that funding. And I go, and again, I think this was in direct relation to the way we set this up. Now, we're not, we didn't ask for less money from last year, but really, the way we, we set this up was it was, it was expressing our intent to eventually ask the Commissioners' Court to fund the court in the coming years, uh, with, under the general revenue fund versus the grant monies that we're seeing less and less of. Uh, but again, we didn't ask for less money. Secondly, uh, I want to emphasize to you that the court continues to, to do well. I think I pointed this out the last time I was here, asking for permission to submit the grant. We were recognized by the Governor's Office in their five-year grants implementation plan. Um, and what the Governor's Office said at that time is that they actually wanted to see more grants, court-related grants, uh, being, I guess, funded for the 254 counties across the state, and they wanted to use the El Paso Protective Order Court as a template of the kind of project, uh, that they'd like to see. So again, we, we continue to do well, um, and we've been recognized, so the court is, is, has been successful. So again, we've crafted the two motions, uh, in eight and nine. Uh, I know Wally was being kept in the loop, but I don't see him here, uh, to answer any financial questions, so I'm not sure if Ed, uh, or somebody from the Budget Office, uh, would be ready to answer some of those funding questions.
Yeah. Betsy, you know, this is something, again, that also came up during, during budget discussions, and, and this year, I don't think we had as much of a conversation about the amount of, the number of positions, um, that are currently grant-funded. And, uh, you know, I know that there's some where, where there is some general funding available if, if the grants don't come in. But, you know, I've always expressed concern, you know, regarding any time that we have to absorb positions in the General Fund because it's, you know, we, we're not able to absorb all the grant positions that we have currently, and we, we really don't have any sort of mechanism to decide, you know, aside from presentations just today, as they come up, you know, it, it's just sort of, well, we have one position here, one position there, that, that isn't grant-funded anymore. Uh, we haven't prioritized what positions we would fund in the event that grants are lost and, and which ones we, we wouldn't. And it's, when we look at our JPD budget, right, they've lost state funds where we've had to pick up, uh, funding there on, on the JPD's budget. And it just concerns me that every time we do this, because I, I sort of almost view this as, as the state's way of, of, uh, forcing counties to, uh, pay for positions that were previously, uh, funded through, through other mechanisms, and, and it's not something that we can afford over the long term, and I think it's something we really have to evaluate, uh, very carefully, uh, versus just, you know, at one position at a time as it, as it isn't funded.
Yes, sir, and I've asked, uh, Wally is part of, um, over this next year, and not to wait until budget time. For us, we, we have it on the calendar, and I don't remember exactly what month it's going to be in, um, but we're, we will do a more deep dive into which grant-funded positions the county has and whether or not there's, um, if we've seen declines in funding and to establish some, um, criteria, just like we do with any new budget request for personnel, we, it goes through a rigorous screening process. These come up individually throughout the year, and they're not, um, well, they're all very important. They're not screened similar to new positions, uh, where we rank them. As you may recall, this year, we, we started off with over 100, um, personnel requests, and we had to whittle it down to, I think, 20, less than 20. Um, and then these grant, grant ones come up one at a time throughout the year, and because they're coming up throughout the year when the grant doesn't get funded, it's, you're looking at one position at a time versus the holistic 100 positions that we need. And so, um, we, we definitely have to, uh, be prepared, and that's part of the presentation that we'll do as we do a deeper dive into grants this year.
Commissioner, one of the things that makes it even more complicated is the fact that we only received the grant award, I believe it was last week or the week before. So in other words, your budget year runs during a period where you approve the budget, and then sure enough, we hear from the state after the fact whether we got the grant or not. Uh, I kind of asked for recommendations from the Budget Office and from HR on how to do it, and I know the, the Veterans Court does it a little bit differently, uh, and we could potentially look into doing that. But again, part of the problem lies in the fact that you don't hear about the award until after the fact, so that complicates it. And then what further complicates it, I think, is if it's a, um, a court-related grant, because there you have various submissions to different entities, and at what point do you look at it? In other words, I submit the, the, the grant application and budget from the Protective Order Court to Judge Gutierrez, who then gives it over to, during this time, it was Mike Isquero, and then Mike gives it over to the Council of Judges, and the Council of Judges gives it over to Budget, and then the Budget goes back and forth, then ultimately comes to you. So there's different, I guess, places where you can start looking at the issues that you brought up, Commissioner Perez, but it's not a straightforward, go to the Budget Office and the Budget Office comes to you all process. So it, that further, I think, complicates, uh, the issue. And then when, when do you start looking at the, the different applicants is another issue that you probably want to, with Ms. Keller touched on. But again, I think here, we're talking about not so much dedicating more funds as I indicated before. It's just the way we configured things. Uh, we basically told the state, fund us, and we'll head in that direction maybe next year. But as far as the funding, uh, again, we received the same, and it, it went a long way. They were pretty honest with us, the CJAC Committee was, which saying they're not going to fund all of... to fund all of these things forever, so.
All right. Again, just to, I mean, you know, we had a pretty tough discussion during budget time, and there were a lot of departments that we rejected, as Betsy indicated, you know, positions, and it's, I think it's difficult to prioritize, you know, a position because it's grant-funded, you know, that it receives some sort of priority when it comes to funding versus, you know, those positions that aren't grant-funded, and I think that's what we're facing here.
Danielle, did you want to add something?
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, good morning. Danielle Chavez from Budget and Fiscal Policy. Just wanted to let you know that we are trying to revamp the agenda process as well, so that we can get these kind of items more on the forefront, and so we're not doing it on the back end like this one as well.
If I can follow up on Commissioner Perez's request, maybe we can incorporate this into some of our Thursday meetings, where we can have, because of the staggered nature of these grants, that we maybe come up with a priority of those grants that we can discuss. And Judge, I just have one question for you. I love your budget circles.
It brings back memories.
Yes. On the court coordinator position, I think there's a conflict here.
Yes.
If you look at the pay, we listed on the agenda at 75,006, and I think you have it listed at 181.
Okay. This is the one that you're-
Yes, yes, that's approximately 81, 830, and we have it on the agenda, 75,006. Is that the same position we're talking about?
Right. Right, we have it listed, one of the things that happened since we submitted the grant application is the court coordinator that was in that position left. She'd been there for five or six years, so she was at a higher salary. So we just hired one two or three months ago, so she came in at a lower salary, and that's why I think the difference in the discrepancies, or the discrepancy in the two items.
I think it's a good point. We've got to be very careful with getting all these grants that require salaries, because we come across a situation when the grant goes away, and we can never, we can't get rid of them, they're great people, we need them to do the job, and it creates a situation of, we just told 80 people, or said, we can't hire 80 jobs, but now we've got another one coming in right after budget, after telling 80 different department heads, we don't have the money to hire more people, asking for more people. And it creates one of those situations where we've got to be very careful if people go out for grants, they understand that if the grant doesn't come in, then the money doesn't come in, and the job doesn't exist.
I do think that we need to have a larger conversation, though, amongst the court in terms of, you know, figuring out some way to prioritize those entities or those offices that do have grant positions, because I personally would hate to see the Protective Order Court go without a court coordinator, because they do such great work for the community and for the women of our community. And so I know that it's tough, given that we passed the budget, and this wasn't a part of the discussions that we had, but because we haven't been able to have those discussions, I mean, I think it would be really unfortunate for us not to approve this today, to be able to continue the good work that is done by the Protective Order Court. But I do think we need to have a deeper dive into all of these positions, and we did briefly talk about it during budget, the need to look at this in a greater way. But this is just one of those situations that comes up, and it'll happen throughout the rest of the year, where perhaps we'll have another grant where something may come up, but without having that added perspective, I would hate for us not to move forward in approving this. But I agree.
I'll make a motion to approve both items number eight and number nine.
Can we take a separate vote on those, if possible?
Sure. Sure. Then I'll change my motion to read, make a motion to approve item number eight.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That is to approve the grant that has been awarded, so I would hope that we would all be supportive of that money coming in. Judge, did you want to say anything? Okay.
Another word. If I start crying, that's not emotional support.
For us or for the judge?
And then I'll make a motion to approve item nine.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
No.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Where is, no, the additional funding is coming out of just, how much is in there?
I believe it's, I better not speculate.
More than a dollar.
But less than $100,000.
That's, that's half of it.
It, I believe, I believe we have either $125,000 or $75,000, but I can't remember.
My only fear is we're 15 days into the year, and we're about to deplete half of that fund already. If that's, if that's the case, is that, is that the case?
Let us get the exact amount, one second.
Danielle Chavez, Budget and Fiscal Policy, it shows 1.6 million is in there, in the grant match.
That's not the contingency transfer out grant match? Yeah, that's, that's not our contingency grant match. Give me, give me-
It's a much different number.
We probably have all of our grant matches in there, but we have a set amount for undesignated grant matches under G-Admin, and that's where this would be actually coming from.
And have we typically, on a given year, depleted that account?
We do not generally deplete that account.
Okay.
Commissioner Hagerty, if I can follow up on that. Betsy, I think this same time last year, were we about in the same boat?
Not that I recall, sir.
15 days in, I hope not.
Not that I, I'm not aware of us being in the same boat, no, sir.
My fear is if we're, and I very much am supportive of this, I most likely be voting for it, but we've got to be very careful. There's not a single employee that isn't worth having, there isn't a single department that isn't worth keeping, there isn't a single grant that isn't amazing, and my fear is if we, if we fund everything that's amazing, we're going to be out of luck. And I understand the need of this, and I'm going to vote yes, but it's something we need to talk about and, and really have, I don't like 15 days into the year, already having our budget being $50,000 off because we need to hire another employee, after telling 80 people they couldn't have a job. It's frustrating.
And on that same note, I know you're in the middle of the vote, but also this year, the Council of Judges is going to do one of its first-ever strategic planning sessions, and because we should not make those decisions in a vacuum, we will definitely reach out to them and ask that they look at all of their grant funding, and that the council as a whole also prioritize, we know that they're all important, but to help prioritize and give us that feedback, so that when Commissioners' Court goes through and looks at grants and categorizing them, that we can, you know, like, which ones are meeting statutory needs, which ones were we funding, because sometimes we're funding it, and we find a grant that will fund it for a few years. And so it, it basically is something we were already committed to doing, and we definitely don't want to discourage departments from going out and finding grant funds when it's possible for services we do deliver. But we could also ask the council to help us go through with that, with that prioritization and accept their input as well.
Right.
Yes.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. This will have to be a larger discussion heading into the next fiscal year, as we, as you've given us a heads up that this grant funding could go away completely, and so this will be something we'll have to survive in the future, but I'm glad that we're going to continue the good work that's happening already.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.
Item number 10, approve and authorize the county judge to accept the fiscal year 2018 Adult Drug Court Discretionary Grant Program Award funded by the Bureau of Justice Department for the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in the amount of $461,420 for a four-year term from January 1, 2019, through December 31, 2022, and with a match of $152,089 that will be satisfied with existing salaries. Contract number 2018-0703.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Judge, County Commissioner Sylvia Serna for the Veterans Treatment Court. And yes, just like, you know, she read into the record, this is to accept a four-year grant from the Adult Drug Court Discretionary Grant Program. It is award, this award is funded by the Bureau of Justice Department. We have been applying for this grant since 2014 for the past four years, and we are so, so fortunate to have received it this year. It will start January the 1st of 2019, and it will be to fund a specialty court liaison, full-time employee. And for the very first time, we've been in the program, Veterans Treatment Court has been in operation since 2012, and we will have the program evaluated. Again, we have been applying since 2014, and we're very, very happy that we're going to have our program evaluated. Are there any questions?
Questions, Commissioners? To approve. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much for your support.
Have a great afternoon.
Item number 11, approve and authorize the county judge to accept the statement of grant award from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division, 384th Adult Drug Court Program, in the amount of $182,988 from September 1, 2018, through August 31, 2019. A county match is not required. Contract number 2018-0658.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Annalisa Davila with the Adult Probation Department, this is-
Guillermo Zavallo, good morning, you all. Guillermo Zavallo, compliance officer with the 384th Adult Drug Court.
And we're basically here just asking for approval to accept the award that has already been granted by the Governor's Office. There is no cash match, as was stated. The program has been going on since 1999, and its collaboration between the Adult Probation Department and the 384th, we work collaboratively to assist persons with substance abuse issues, nonviolent offenders. And so it's been going on for about 20 years, side of the 384th. Currently, it's funding two counselors and partial probation officer, and through our grant, through our state grants from the probation department, we subsidize the rest of the funding for the officer.
$182,000 in the grant match, we would approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners.
Item number 12, litigation, justice, and law enforcement. Approve and authorize the county judge to accept the statement of grant award from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division Domestic Violence Unit Grant Award on behalf of the District Attorney's Office in the amount of $150,000, with a cash match of $129,610 for the grant period beginning September 1, 2018, through August 31, 2019, for a total project amount of $279,610. Further, authorize the county judge to sign the resolution. Funding is available in general fund, domestic violence, transfer out grant match. Contract number 2018-0738.
Good morning.
Good morning, County Judge, Commissioners. Karen LaRose, First Assistant District Attorney. This is the grant for our domestic violence unit. You know, originally, when we submitted the grant, we were seeking a paralegal position for a program that the DA would like to institute to perhaps push these cases further along in the process. That was not granted, but what remains as granted fully funds the positions that we have and the ongoing effort of the domestic violence unit. We have, last year, we had 5,873 domestic violence charges. When you consider that our total charges are in the area of 27,700 charges, it's a big part of what we do, and the district attorney has shown himself to be very responsive to this type of crime, and this grant assists us in that effort. So we are asking for the approval to authorize the county judge to sign off on this grant on behalf of our office.
Make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Item number 13, approve and authorize the county judge to sign the reimbursement agreement in the amount of $200,000 between the El Paso County Sheriff's Office and the Drug Enforcement Administration with the Organized Crime Drug Enforcement Task Forces Strike Force Strategic Initiative Programs for the investigative expenses associated with specific OSIDF cases from October 1, 2018, through September 30, 2019. Contract number 2018-0712.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is an annual reimbursement agreement between the Sheriff's Office and the Drug Enforcement Administration for OSIDF cases.
We would approve.
And Lieutenant, just for the record, there's no match.
No match.
Thank you. Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Have a good afternoon.
Item number 14, approve and authorize the county judge to accept the statement of grant award, Local Border Security Program Grant from the Office of the Governor Homeland Security Grants Division in the amount of $245,000 to fund the El Paso County Sheriff's Operation Border Star from September 1, 2018, through August 30, 2019. A county match is not required. Contract number 2018-0717.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Sergeant Greer, Sheriff's Office, Criminal Investigation Division, Narcotics Section. We're seeking approval to accept the grant, the local border security grant reimburses overtime and mileage, makes us, makes it possible for us to work our narcotics investigations after regular duty hours, and this is a burden of the department's overtime budget. We've been applying for this grant since 2008. There is no fiscal impact and no match required. Available for any questions.
To approve? Second.
Commissioner Perez?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Item number 15, economic development. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the Historic Site Tourist Promotion and Preservation Services Agreement with the Concordia Heritage Association, a Texas nonprofit organization, for the operation and tourist promotion of the historic Concordia Cemetery in the amount of $87,156 for a term beginning October 1, 2018, through September 30, 2019. Funding is available in Special Revenue Tourist Promotion Concordia Cemetery. Further, approve the reallocation of funding from Special Revenue Tourist Promotion Operations contingencies to Special Revenue Tourist Promotions Concordia Cemetery. Contract number 2018-0630.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Judge. Valery Venesia, Economic Development Heritage Tourism Coordinator. And here with me today is Ms. Patricia Kidney, President of the Concordia Heritage Association, who helps us alongside our public works, Mr. Sergio Apodaca, with all of the maintenance of the grounds, and organizing all the wonderful events that they have to promote tourism and visitation of the site. This is a renewal. We renew the service agreement for managing the site every year, and even prior to the county establishing this agreement, Concordia Heritage Association took it upon themselves to maintain the site since back in the 1990s.
1990s.
Anyhow, there is an increase of just over 18,000. This is to cover the cost of a 50-cent hourly increase for the security guards, and I'll let Ms. Patricia talk a little bit more about that. The other thing is to include two random checks in the middle of the night, seven days a week, as a means of deterring vandalism. This is a widespread issue statewide. The Texas Historical Commission has also taken action to deter vandalism with our historic cemeteries across the state. with our historic cemeteries across the state. There is some budget available under the hot funds contingency account if you do approve, which information has been included as part of this presentation. Failed to- the slides are, sorry about that. Ms. Patricia, do you want to add a couple of additional words?
First of all, we thank you so much for your funding and your help throughout all these years. You started doing this in two thousand, and you've shown great faith in us to maintain and preserve and secure this historic cemetery. We have a great many people visiting every year. We've managed to make it safe for the families to come. We tell them, it's not our job to preserve and take care of your family's headstones. We want to make it safe for you to come in, walk on the grounds, make sure you're not walking in weeds, you're walking on good roads, you have security to protect you when you're there. And these are the things that we feel very blessed that we've been entrusted with. We feel that the security company has been with us since two thousand and nine, and this is the first time they've asked for an increase, and that's fifty cents an hour for their guards. And the second is the two random checks overnight, daily at the cemetery. We found through a compilation of all of the activity reports throughout the time that most of the mischief happens at night, when they can jump those walls or when they can come in, do their animal sacrificing, are there vandalism, and the different things that go on there. As you know, back in June, the Benai Zion Cemetery of the Jewish section was vandalized. Now, this is not under our purview. They have their own security and their own, it's privately owned and maintained. However, we've petitioned some of the members of that group to allow the security to go in to try to help them, if they will. So far, we're not there. But our point is, people come through, they come through that tunnel, and they jump the walls, and they just are up to mischief. So we'd appreciate your consideration for the two randoms at night and the extra fifty cents an hour. I'm open to questions.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for your patience and the work that you do to help preserve the cemetery in our history.
Thank you.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Leon?
Yes. Do we currently have tours going through there, and if we do, is there a fee?
During the day, there are no fees unless we ask for donations. If groups want to schedule a private tour, anyone goes through there when the gates are open. Currently, we're eight to five. And so we ask, if they want to have one of our people give them a guided tour, then we ask them to donate. After hours, there is a, they do have to arrange with security, and that goes to, it's a fee for the security.
And the other fees that are, you call donations, do they stay with your organization? Where do those fees go?
They go into the organizational side of our budget, and we present that when we do our contract information. And we have a breakdown. It supports our, let's see, the ghost, you know, it pays for the tours, it pays for our office equipment, our printing, let's see, let me go through my things, the water bill, telephone, I'm going through mentally all of these things that we go, I'm just doing, this is budget. You guys have driven me crazy doing budgets, so I'm in a budget mode. But it goes, it's organization and operational.
Okay.
I'd be happy to, it's in the, I believe it's probably, what, exhibit C or something, B, A? It's in there. You have it. Yes. Thank you.
If I can add one last thing, I just want to commend both Ms. Patricia and Mr. Sergio Apodaca from our Public Works Department on how very resourceful they are. If you get a chance to go out for their Dia de los Muertos celebration in early November, you'll see a lot of the landscaping that they've done. The last time that I went out there when we were reviewing the budget and putting everything together, Mr. Apodaca drove me around, there's how many acres?
We have fifty-two acres.
And so he was showing me a nice trail markers that he made out of some large agaves, and I was like, wow, these are amazing, all these trees that you've planted and all the different cactus gardens that they've been putting together. And I asked Mr. Apodaca, where did you get all these plants? And he's like, oh, from right here in the cemetery. He, really, in terms of sustainability and using what they have, it really looks nice. So if you get a chance to go out, you will be able to see all the different changes that have been made recently.
And we'd like to invite you for our walk-through history, which is coming up Saturday, the twentieth. This is the day we have storytellers standing out, talking about people who are important to our history. So far, we've got about forty-five to fifty people lined up. Hopefully, we won't have this kind of weather. But we have a tractor-drawn hayride to take you around, and you'll learn so much. And you'll see where your dedication comes to us and how it helps us.
This is during the daytime?
During the day, from eleven to three.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
There are ghost tours at night, but we'll, you can call me-
I'll stick to the data.
Yeah, we try not to do those. All right. Any more questions?
Questions, Commissioners?
To approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Item number seventeen, Public Works. Approve and authorize the county judge to sign the fixed-price construction agreement between owner and contractor with Mirador Enterprises, Inc., in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty-six cents for the demolition of the old AGCA building located at Oscarate Park and the old Humane Society buildings located at three-two-five Shelter Place. Funding is available in Capital Improvement Projects eighteen, Public Works renovation, Capital Projects, Capital Projects Oscarate Park Improvement oh-seven renovations, and appropriated funds from the El Paso Sports Commission. Contract number two thousand and eighteen, zero six, four, nine.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Robin Sully, Facility Maintenance Director. Both of these facilities are in very poor condition. The foundation is weak, they have cracks in the structure, and it is not suitable for occupancy. We are asking for approval for this contract, to move forward on this contract in the amount of one hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
When I saw this on the agenda, again, I know we've discussed this several times, but I believe that we've awarded the bids, and this is just a contract to move forward.
Yes.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon.
Item number eighteen, discuss and take appropriate action for a variance request from the County of El Paso subdivision regulations for Payton Estates, Unit Eight.
Morning, Judge. Commissioners, Gilbert Saldana with Public Works. Payton Estates, Unit Eight, will be a subdivision with approximately three hundred and twenty-seven lots. The subdivision will be in precinct number three, off of Payton Road, just north of Rojas Drive. Water sewer will be provided by the Posse de la Esteban Mud, and a regional ponding will contain runoff from the entire subdivision. A two-point-three-acre park will, is proposed for this subdivision and will also be maintained by the Posse de la Esteban Mud. A characteristic that is not typical of subdivisions, of these type of subdivisions, are two blocks just north and east of the proposed park, shodding green. These blocks will be alley-loaded lots where no driveways will be permitted in the front of the lots, where vehicular access will be only allowed through the alley in the back of these lots. The developer, Hunt Payton Estates, is requesting a variance from the subdivision regulations that includes minimum building setbacks from the property lines, right-way widths, and minimum lot size requirements that comply with the subdivision, the alternative subdivision design standards, with only one exception. The developer is requesting minimum ten-foot setbacks on the lots with alley-loaded conditions. Our department has reviewed the variance request and recommends approval.
Those ten-foot setbacks vary from our standard by how much?
Okay, the, our, the original setbacks from our subdivision regulations is ten feet from the front. But when the developer asks for the variance that was approved in two thousand and fourteen, which is what we refer to the alternative subdivision design standards, as part of a condition, it does ask that the front is fifteen. So it does originally meet the original setbacks in our standards, but it doesn't quite meet the alternative design standards requirements. So the idea in the original, or the alternative design standards that we modified in two thousand and fourteen was to have, to allow the house to be set forward a little bit closer to the front, but we needed the twenty-foot setback at the garage so that if there's ever a car parking from the garage, it doesn't protrude or block the sidewalks. But in this scenario, there's not going to be any driveways in the front. So that's the reason why we thought it was okay to, I guess, support that variance request.
Commissioners, Commissioner Perez?
What's the average lot size? What's the various lot sizes?
They vary in sizes, from, I think it's like just under five thousand, and then they exceed over six thousand. But they all, all the lots, the variation of lots does comply with that requirement that we did stipulating that variance process.
Any questions?
And just also, just to make sure, in case if you're a little bit unsure about the alleys, the alley is a, it is identified in the subdivision design standards. It's not something that the variance is really requesting for. It's just, I just wanted to bring it up because it's a different situation. I don't think it's the first type of development of that sort in the county. But apparently, this is a scenario that's already been exercised and utilized in the city of El Paso, in the Terra de la Esteban area. And we checked with the fire marshal, we kind of did our due diligence, and everybody didn't seem to have any issues with that proposed modifications.
And it's all paved, correct?
Yes, it'll be a twenty-foot wide alley pavement. And in the previous, oh, those are some exhibits right there. That's the example, the photograph of Terra de la Esteban. If you can see the, on the left side of the screen, there's the street. And then, and then where you see that red vehicle, that's the alley, right there, that's the alley, and you see the alleys, the driveways in the rear of the lots. And I think there's another photograph that shows what it looks like from the ground level. That's the alley right there, except I think the forefront picture, there's no house there at this time, but that's what it should look like, the end product.
So this is the rear of the home?
Yes, sir. That's the rear.
Gilbert, on the other map, you had two blue spots.
Okay, those are ponding areas.
Ponding?
Yes, sir. And so there's those two ponding areas, and then the green is the proposed park. And so the alley-loaded lots, like I said, the ones that are going to be fronting that park. So you'll have no driveways almost in those two blocks that are facing the alley, I mean, the park, so.
Any questions?
Sure.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Item number nineteen, purchasing. Approve and authorize the purchasing agent to reject all responses and close out RFQ number one-eight-zero-four-one, secure and/or staff-secure residential treatment services for post-adjudicated youth and resolicit.
Good morning.
Good morning, Deborah Correjo, County Purchasing Agent. In this case, we're requesting that the county exercise its right to reject all and resolicit. The reason for this is because the juvenile probation department is trying to create a pool of qualified vendors that will match the current amount in the pool that they have. And there are some very specific reasons that they need a multitude of treatment facilities for these youth. In this case, we received five responses. Only four were able to be reviewed. So it was, it was just decided between the department and purchasing that we would close this down without any type of review of the submitted responses, go back out to the vendor community, and leave it on the street longer, because we did receive some feedback that perhaps it didn't stay on the street long enough. These are sizable qualifications packages, and we're also going to use the state of Texas resources to see if we can't garner more responses.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Item number twenty, grant applications. Approve the submission of county grant applications as listed and described. If awarded, all grant award agreements will be brought back to the Commissioners' Court for final acceptance and approval. Approve and authorize the Community Services Department through its Nutrition Division to submit a Texas Feeding Texans Home-Delivered Meal Grant Application to the Texas Department of Agriculture for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, and authorize the county judge to sign the application and the resolution authorizing county grant. Contract number two thousand and eighteen, zero seven, one, three.
Good morning.
Good morning, again. Irene Valenzuela, Community Services Department. We come before you every year to request permission to submit a grant proposal to the Texas Feeding Texans Program under the Texas Department of Agriculture, and this is to support our homebound delivery meal program under the Senior Nutrition Program with the county. This year, we're requesting approximately one hundred and ten thousand dollars to support that program. Texans Feeding Texans provides grant award notice around January, so we'll be receiving award notice until January, two thousand and nineteen.
Make a motion to, second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good morning and afternoon.
Item number twenty-one, approve and authorize the El Paso County Sheriff's Office Detention Bureau to apply for the Office of Justice Program fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, State Criminal Alien Assistance Program for the period of July first, two thousand and sixteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Good morning.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. The El Paso County Sheriff's Office Detention Bureau, again, will be applying for the SCAP application and requesting your approval to apply, with no match required.
Approve.
You know, once you leave, we're running out of audience here.
I know.
They have attorneys left. Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good afternoon and morning and evening.
For the record.
Item number twenty-three, with the correction per Budget and Fiscal Policy Department, approve amendment number one to the County of El Paso's two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and nineteen operating budget. This budgetary amendment will increase grants by two million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, sixty-nine dollars and eighty cents, and allocate funding to capital by five million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars, thus increasing the County of El Paso's two thousand and eighteen through two thousand and nineteen overall operating budget of four hundred and twenty-six million, three hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and eight dollars, to four hundred and twenty-eight million, six hundred and four, correction, six hundred and four thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and eighty cents. Also, for information, new backup has been provided. Good morning, again. Danielle Chavez, Budget and Fiscal Policy. Do you have any questions?
Commissioners, any questions?
We would approve.
Second.
Commissioner Perez.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Caesar, before we break, because we now are entering the executive session, I wanted to read an item in, because I need the court to make a finding as it pertains to contract negotiations, and this would be for item twenty-four- And this would be for item 24G in executive session. I have prepared a memo. And can you read it in, please?
Item 24G pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0725, discuss contract negotiations with Life Ambulance Service, Inc. for ambulance services in El Paso County.
Good morning, County Judge. Commissioners, Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. Section 551.0725 of the Texas Government Code authorize a commissioner's court to conduct a closed meeting to deliberate business and financial issues relating to a contract under negotiation if certain conditions are met. That is, if the commissioner's court needs to vote unanimously, that deliberation in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the court in negotiations with a third party. The attorney, myself, Christina Sanchez, advises the commissioner's court that written a determination that deliberation in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the commissioner's court in negotiations with a third party. I have done so and I will provide a copy of this memo to the clerk to include that as part of the meeting minutes. And finally, that a tape recording of the proceeding, the closed session, is made. At this time, again, I have determined that the deliberation concerning business and financial issues relating to the negotiations with Life Ambulance would have a detrimental effect on the position of the commissioner's court. Therefore, I am requesting that the court vote unanimously that deliberations in open session would have a detrimental effect on the court negotiations and that all said deliberations take place in closed session. And lastly, I would request that the commissioner's court direct the county clerk to ensure that all proceedings in closed sessions be recorded. And at this time, your action would be a finding as discussed.
I have no objection. Do we have to take an individual vote or just a consensus?
No, we have to take a vote to make that finding.
I would move to make that.
Make that finding as read into the record. Thank you, Judge.
Second.
Commissioner Betis?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty?
Aye.
Judge Vought?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Five minutes.
Commissioner's Court will recess into executive session to discuss items 24A through 24G pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 and 551.0725. Commissioner's Court will reconvene to take official action.
The District Attorney invites you to join the 10 Mile Walk for Victims of Crime on Sunday, November 4th. The walk begins at the County Courthouse promptly at 7:00 AM and ends at Yucca Park. For more information, visit www.epcounty.com/DA/events or call 915-546-2091.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Road and Bridge Fabin's Warehouse located at 1331 North Fabin Street in Fabin's, Texas 79838. The Road and Bridge Canotillo Warehouse located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas 79835. And the Road and Bridge Montana Warehouse located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas 79938.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 AM at Danny's Diner located at 4690 Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the Northeast, West Side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at http://www.epcounty.com/budget/financialrecovery.htm to make your payments online or find out more about our kiosk locations. We now accept payments on misdemeanor felony and justice of the peace cases.
You can now watch Commissioners Court Meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for "El Paso County Commissioners" or "El Paso County, Texas." Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coastthe number two coastrx.com. Happy savings!
Did you know the County of El Paso's Purchasing Department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the manner required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The 346th District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the Reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director at 915-546-2119, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number 915-546-2048.
The District Attorney invites you to join the 10 Mile Walk for Victims of Crime on Sunday, November 4th. The walk begins at the County Courthouse promptly at 7:00 AM and ends at Yucca Park. For more information, visit www.epcounty.com/DA/events or call 915-546-2091.
The District Attorney invites you to join the 10 Mile Walk for Victims of Crime on Sunday, November 4th. The walk begins at the County Courthouse promptly at 7:00 a.m. and ends at Yaca Park. For more information, visit www epcounty.com/da/events or call 915-546-2091.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public. The sandbags are outside of the facilities and are available 24 hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following: The Roden Bridge Fabians Warehouse, located at 1331 North Fabians Street in Fabians, Texas, 79838. The Roden Bridge Canotillo Warehouse, located at 191 Canotillo Avenue in Canotillo, Texas, 79835. And the Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse, located at 14698 Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, 79938.
Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at 7:30 a.m. at Danny's Diner, located at 4690 Trent Mountain Road. Every week, he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the Northeast, West Side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting.
Don't wait in line, pay online. Visit the Financial Recovery Division website at
That looks like it is off of, yeah, it's definitely on the West Side.
Commissioners' Court has reconvened into a regular open session. Item number 25, discuss and take action on the pending claim regarding Angie Myers, County Attorney's File Number 020718-ALC.
Amanda Frizzell, Assistant County Attorney, I would be making a motion for the court to deny the claim of Angie Myers.
To move.
Second.
Commissioner Betas.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 26, discuss and take appropriate action on the potential litigation on the Hotel Motel delinquency claim, County Attorney's File Number 030717-PC.
Good afternoon, County Judge Commissioners, Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. My recommendation to the court is to approve and authorize the County Attorney's Office to negotiate a settlement agreement with Elevation Hotel Management as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Commissioner Betas.
Aye.
Commissioner Leon.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 27, discuss and take appropriate action on the pending litigation regarding Maria Ormedas versus El Paso County, County Attorney's File Number 006418-LD.
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. My name is Donnie McGilbro. I'm here on behalf of the El Paso County Attorney's Office. I am here to ask the court to reject the offer of settlement propounded by Ms. Hernalis in the amount of $1,900,000. And to make no counteroffer to that.
I want to approve.
Second.
And that be to deny.
Deny.
Thank you.
Deny.
I'm sorry, move to approve what he said, which means deny, right? Yes.
Very much denied. We don't want that on the record.
Commissioner Betas.
Aye.
Commissioner Stout.
Aye.
Commissioner Hagerty.
Aye.
Judge vote.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 28, discuss and take action on the potential litigation regarding La Chica bail bonds, County Attorney's Case Number 015218-PL.
Good afternoon, Donnie McGilbro. On behalf of El Paso County Attorney's Office, I'm here before the court to ask that the court not grant me permission to negotiate invoiced amounts, in particular, $1,372.50, to negotiate down from that in an attempt to settle this matter, and that I be required to only accept $1,372.50 as any type of settlement in this matter.
I don't think we need that motion, do we?
You don't necessarily need that motion, so it could be a no-action item for this, so that's fine.
No action on this item. I believe that concludes today's agenda. Thank you all so much. Have a great week. Please stay warm and safe out in the streets.
Thank you again for the time.
This concludes today's meeting at 12:26. Yeah.